Is that what he?
We're in a public hearing.
Right.
So I'm good.
It's the public hearing, yes.
Oh, if there's other comments, then yeah, we can take other comments. Sure.
What on the previous item?
No, this is public comment on this item.
Okay.
But she's bringing it forward, so.
Any, uh, public, uh, input in general, George?
I'd like to hear Carrie's, uh, request.
She will.
She'll get it.
Yeah, but when she does it, I can't say anything. I'd like to know what she's gonna do now.
Okay, Carrie?
Okay. Um, Carrie Pintar, fourteen seventeen Mill Street. It's been a long time since I've been up for podium, but back to ask for the RPC's recommendation, hopefully favorable. We are looking to start the infrastructure work on our property up on ten forty-nine Bell Avenue. We had the corners surveyed in, uh, came to light when we started to work on the fence. We called the fire department to get the setbacks around the fire hydrant, which appears to be on our property. Then we were told it was three feet all the way around. However, when we have the corner shown, we don't own that property. Our property corner is twenty-one feet off of the existing street on the, uh, north end. And on the south end, our property corner is correct where it's marked. However, back in nineteen sixty-six, again, the city streets, it was stepped off, we think, by Greg Chatches. And the street, everyone on the west side of Bell Avenue is nine feet into the road. Our property corner on that piece is correct. However, everybody and property owners nine feet into the road. And so in our efforts to try and connect the curb and gutter from the south side to the north side of our property, we are unable to do so to the existing curb and gutter. So I did reach out to each individual, one of you, some I took up, some have a map. I don't know who's all been there. But we're asking for the RPC's favorable recommendations so we can go to the city to ask to have that piece abandoned so we can have rec brothers come to make the curb and gutter and tie in with the existing curvature of the road. And I brought pictures, I mean, you guys all have a map. We brought pictures. I know you've got one picture in your, um, packet, but we did bring pictures and make an approach and give them all to you guys. Uh, down, there's a pack for everybody in there, um, that shows where our property lines are. We've marked them with flags. We've marked them with paint, um, to show the existing structure and how everything was game around and what we're trying to do by tying them together. Our neighbors are currently, it looks like we're planted out nine feet into the street from our property corner, and that's not the case. We just can't seem to make the curb and gutter as existing. If the RPC and the city council do not approve for us to abandon that piece, we will have recs bring that curb and gutter from a ninety-degree angle back twenty-one feet, come over a hundred and thirty-five feet and come out nine feet, and that will be the new road layout on Bell Avenue.
So, did you, did you say you had, um, already gone to the city council about this?
No, we will go to the city council next. We've been to the council before. But this, this issue, this would be the first time we go to the council. I have also reached out to four members of the council to take them up there as well so that everyone can see what it is we're asking the board to consider. But I need to pass this through the RPC first before the city takes it on next month.
Yeah.
The RPC hears it first and then they recommend to the council.
I'll be honest, I don't even know how this got here because it's not necessary to have it abandoned to install a curb and gutter. I don't know if you know that.
It's on our, it's not our property though.
Well, I mean, I'm, we're trying to do the same thing and, um, we did have the engineer draw out plans. We're not, it's, it's owned by the city, that land. Curb and gutter is always owned by the city.
Yeah, but it's planned, it's planned.
So have, have we, have we closed the public comment side of it or now we're going to discussion?
Oh, I don't know.
Our, our problem is this, the, the-
I'm closing out the public comment. We're going to, now to discussion on this item, so.
Does George have comments?
No, she answered all the questions. Thank you.
So.
All right, so, yeah, I just, um, I know it's, it's very-
Bring it into the record probably, sorry.
I'm sorry.
If you can read the, the discussion, possible recommendations.
Okay. Okay, we will go to this item, discussion for possible recommendations, approval petition for vacation or abandonment of road easement. Applicants Joseph and Carrie Pintar wish to have a section of street frontage of their property abandoned. Section would be twenty-one feet on the north end and nine feet on the south end by one hundred and thirty-four point two feet, street frontage. Property address is ten forty-nine Bell Avenue, Eli Nevada. APN is zero zero one dash four five one dash fourteen. Okay, now discussion.
All right, so I just wanted to point out that there's a map in here that identifies the, you know, where the city lines are. And, I mean, this is another case of really bad planning, you know, that we're having to deal with later. Um, every, everyone on that street, it is very built far into the city's territory. I guess my only concern, um, is just, and, you know, I did go out and walk the property, I looked at it, um, and uh, I guess my only concern is if we abandon it, we, we never did abandon it for any of the other neighbors, and they are well aware of that. One neighbor was out there and he said, "Well, if you're gonna give her all this, all this frontage land, I want my piece too," and everybody else. And to be quite honest, I could see that being a problem, um, you know, and I was, I didn't even mention anything to him about what I felt about it. Like, he just kind of walked that statement and I, I just kind of see that being a problem. I don't know that it's absolutely necessary to do what you wanna do. I believe the city should reserve the interest in that property if they wanna put sidewalks along that, um, that road, so. I could see this opening a big can of worms by approving this.
There isn't a single sidewalk on Bell Avenue, on the east or west side. So if they choose to sidewalk that, that's great, but I'm the only property owner there that's going to do, have that. And their bigger issue is the power's in the middle of that as, because Mount Wheeler stubbed over the power, not for us because there's no, uh, the power is direct buried on Bell Avenue. And so two years ago, they had the Q and D come and use the east side of the road and they bore under and put pipe up so that if they ever have a failure, they have access to it. They cut across two places in the street, one up a little bit farther at like ten forty-four Bell and then down where we are. They've stubbed over across. That power's now in the middle of the street. They placed, where they placed it, they thought was on our private property, that's where they ran their power to. It's currently in the middle of the street.
Well, that's, we're not really, I mean, that's not on the agenda, we're talking about-
I mean, it's okay. If you guys don't, if you want us to curb and gutter as is-
Well, I can just say, for me, I can't speak for everybody else, but I think we're opening a very big can of worms and the neighbors are very well aware of what you're asking for.
So should I be asking this board to make everyone up that street move their curb and gutter nine feet back? So it ties into the property line? Because if they're all in the street, they should move. I'm trying to tie into what's existing.
So what you need to consider too is any new construction, the city did an ordinance not that long ago, right? That all new construction needs to have, requires curb and gutter. Where a lot of those houses, they have been up there for quite some time, probably before this ordinance was in existence, correct?
Right.
So with her-
Check the date.
Do you turn it?
Nineteen sixty-six was when that was developed by Greg Chatches and that was the court order and the place.
Don't misunderstand me after what, curb and gutter.
I'm just trying to explain that any new construction is required to have curb and gutter, which is why she's coming before the board because she wants to build a house up there and to have that.
Let's just differentiate between the fact that, you know, this land, the curb and gutter is built, installed way too far into the road, but every curb and gutter in the city is owned, always owned by the city.
So are, why is the city not paying to install my curb and gutter then? That'd be my next question.
You know, that's another issue.
I'm ten, fifteen thousand dollars in with recs to get curb and gutter installed.
Yeah, so typically it's the property owner's obligation to install curb and gutter and then it becomes city property at that point.
Right, and so why would we be, would we just, I think what you just said proves-
She's not, she's not like, she's not making any more land basically off of this. All she's-
I don't want the land.
All she's trying to do is, all she's trying to do in this situation is get it so that it's lined up for the, for, without making the other issues for other people, um, for the, for the remainder of the, um, for the remainder of the street.
And I'm all for that, I am, um.
So what are, what are, what's your biggest concern? Your, is your concern about just giving the property to her? Is that what you're worried about?
I think it could be viewed as that by neighbors, and I don't think it was actually voiced to me by a neighbor.
I'm sure it was.
You know?
He's unhappy and you know why?
But he's correct.
He's thirty feet over onto our property right now.
Well, that's, that's a different issue.
But that is the issue with what's left, so.
So curb and gutter is always owned by the city. We don't, never by owner. And so why, uh, like, just basically what you said, um, we would basically give it, give that land to the homeowner to install a curb and gutter and then it goes back to the city? Why wouldn't we even do that?
My understanding is that it's because you want it to be uniform with the current curb and gutter, correct?
With, with the current curvature of the street for drainage.
Correct. Otherwise it would, it would corrode.
Yeah, it would jog at ninety degrees and, uh-
You're gonna have a drainage problem onto the other part, parcel. She's helping you out here.
Curb and gutter is required for new construction, correct?
Correct, why I'm here today.
So, you know, you would have to pay, you know, to have it installed, but it is the city's land and it should remain that way.
Already budgeted for installing it, right?
Yeah.
So she's already budgeted for doing a curb and gutter.
But I don't think an abandonment is necessary. It is, it's city land.
I don't see how else we could even that up.
Craig, can I, yeah? That word from Craig, Karen, cities.
I just, I just have one statement. So, um, after Leah's comment, I remember the ordinance, uh, requires the city engineer to approve, um, the curb and gutter and that is the location. Uh, I don't believe there's any prohibition on putting a curb and gutter, um, inside of an easement area because some roads have easement that are wider than where the actual curb and gutter is and that's for future use. So, um, I just wanted to, to make that point for her, I guess.
But am I correct in stating that curb and gutter should be owned, it is owned by the city?
It is, and I believe the curb and gutter could be installed in the radius that they're looking for without the abandonment because, uh, the city can install or direct the curb and gutter to be installed at any locations long as it's the minimum requirements for a street side.
So it could be installed without doing an abandonment?
Correct, it is, I believe, uh, the ordinance itself is very specific and it states that the city engineer is the one who is responsible for the direction of the installation of the curb and gutter.
So like with everyone else, uh, that, that is further down the block, okay, their property line is here, curb and gutter's here, and they've done landscaping up to the curb and gutter.
Yep, correct. And it's, it's just an easement essentially. The, the government reserves the right to put it at some point based-
It's not necessary to do an abandonment.
Then we don't own that property, so I, how can I legally, legally, let's go back to nineteen oh seven and this Cannon Street disaster.
Well, the way it's legally done is-
I can't, I can't.
Through the city engineer, he'll approve the plans and that's the way it's legally done.
But then I can't, I can't landscape that. I got punished for that five years ago.
You know?
So tell me how this is supposed to go.
How did that come about?
Why, how? Because Cannon Street is a very important street on a map from nineteen oh seven. So I've been punished for that, for the property behind my existing house. So this time, instead of ask for forgiveness, we came to this board to ask for approval. And that's gonna turn out the same.
Trying to figure out the, the exact way of going along.
But technicalities, I think it would be great-
Nothing personal on this.
You know, yeah, nothing personal at all. I just, I'm just thinking about, you know, the can of worms would open.
But my neighbor's already nine feet into the road.
Yes, they are, and just, just so you know, it looks like they own that land, but not one neighbor owns that strip.
Oh, I know they don't.
Yeah.
That's evident from where the property corner markers are on the existing map that we have done from a map number eleven fifty and map number ten thirty-six. That property corner on the south side is correct. Everybody on that side of the west side of the street is into the road.
So if, if at any point in time they decided that these individuals needed to put, um, curb and gutter in with the radius that's already been suggested, um, would it line right up with, with that road? Or with the curb and gutter that's already, that's, that would be placed in there? So in other words, would it be set back, you know, say somebody tore down this parcel, uh, this parcel running, tore this building down, which would be a surprise, but it, say they did, um, then essentially, then we could continue, we could continue that curb and gutter all the way down and it would be lined up with what she's suggesting, right?
I believe so. I, I think it would be a best practice as well, so.
What's the chance of that rather than just fix it right now?
Well, I, I agree. I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor for fixing this. I will say, Carrie, I'm, I'm, uh, you could easily have just said screw it and just went in and put your own curb and gutter on that back end and it would've been a nightmare for us, for the entire city. And I appreciate you coming forth and adjusting it right now because you recognize that this is, this is a common problem. This happens a lot, so in my opinion, I don't, I don't think giving you, giving you, we're not really giving you guys that much because we're kind of taking it back again after the curb and gutter gets in place, um, especially since there's a fire hydrant on that far end. Um, it's, in my opinion, this is, um, this is a no-brainer. I would give this to you in a heartbeat. And I appreciate you coming forward to this because you didn't have to, um, so.
We, we would pay for the property. It's not about the property. We don't want the property. All we wanna do is make the tie to the existing curb and gutter.
And, and in my eyes, it makes sense to, to clean that up, otherwise that drop in the street doesn't seem like a safety issue.
Yeah, trying to make sure we're, we're doing this right, so there's no headaches for you down the, down the road on this.
So the only question that, that I have is the existing fire hydrant would be within that piece of land that we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And does that propose any other issues with access to any other utilities? If they're gonna go put fiber optics up through there or, or anything in the future, would, would the fact that it's privately owned or city-owned be an issue? Would there need to be any kind of easement? I mean, is there any future of, of that effect?
However, I would say if they were gonna put fiber optics up there, they would, no, they seriously, Mount Wheeler just paid all that money to bore up, clear on the, the east side of the road, so there would be no reason for them to bore separately when they can run through that pipe.
Would there be any issues with utilities?
A lot of fire hydrants are put on property owners.
Right, property?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not a problem.
That's why we called to see what the required setback was to fence it, and that's where we got started on this whole problem.
Sorry, pardon me. I've been up there, looked at it, and I totally agree that they didn't create the problem. And from my point of view, the city should give them that property if needed to get the, uh, curb, curb and gutter out wherever it needs to be. And you should get a deed, I think, for that little piece of ground.
So, and my, my recommendation was to approve in the, the initial recommendation that I gave. Uh, but looking at it in the, in the light of, that, that this Brown brought up, um, my recommendation would be that it's unnecessary and that the curb and gutter can be installed in the most advantageous, uh, location and design for the city. And again, the city's going to look at that and they're going to approve it, so, um, you know, in light of kind of looking at things a little differently, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily change my recommendation. I think it does no harm, um, but I, I don't think it's necessary.
Hey, one question though. Does the curb and gutter not have to be installed at the edge of their property?
You can have an easement that's a hundred feet wide when the road's only sixty feet wide and then they're just reserving that for future use. Technically, you wouldn't, it's not your land, so you wouldn't give a bill on it, um, but curb and gutter can go wherever the city engineer directs the curb and gutter to go.
But on the same hand, it would be very easy for Carrie, um, and Jody to just put in their curb and gutter on their property line and it would still make a mess.
It would still have to be approved by the city engineer.
So more than likely, if it's on my property?
Well, even, yeah, if, to, to do a jog like that, that would have to be, and I, I'm not speaking for the city engineer. I'm just speaking to best practices, so.
That's private property.
It makes no sense to me. Like, we, we're gonna ask her to put, we're gonna ask her to put curb and gutter on a piece of property that's not her piece of property?
That's, that's, that's typical, um, for any sort of undeveloped area that becomes developed. It's, it's a general, it's a general requirement, um, for subdivision development and or parcels in this case.
I'm, I'm, I moved to approve. I, I think this is silly. I think it should just be approved and then it's cleaned up and everything is clean. As far as I'm concerned, this kind of cleans up that process up there.
I, I just wanna say, are we prepared then for a big backlash? Because, um, if you look at, at that entire road, that, that same square footage, give or take, um, it's not, it's not owned by the homeowner and, um, you know, the abutting homeowner was out, happened to be doing yard work and, you know, I told him, "Yeah, you know, if the city wanted to come down and do a nice sidewalk later, they could." And he's like, "And I know that. They could rip up my, all my plans and do that. I'm, I'm very well aware of that." But if you're giving this person, and this isn't anything personal, I'm just, you know, it's, it's just the bigger picture. He's like, "I want my piece and everybody else on the street wants their piece too." So are we prepared for that? That's just all I'm, I'm saying.
I'd be happy for you to let them have their piece if they're gonna come pay four hundred and twenty dollars to this board to go through this process. Because that's fifteen parcels up there. You guys could make some money.
They chose not to do that. So they chose, so they chose not to get the, they chose not to get a survey properly. They put-
But you don't know that, I, I'm, I'm guessing that you're probably accurate on ninety percent of what's going on over there. But you don't know that for sure on every case.
We've got a whole row of trees that are not, uh, you know.
And I agree with you. I, I, I wouldn't even say it's considered grandfathered in if you look at the amount of years. I think it was very bad planning by the Chatches estate, um, building too far into the road. I, I agree with you on that, but.
So Leah, what would be your alternative? I mean, if, would you say no to this?
No.
Then what, then, then would you be okay with telling all of these city, all of these, um, all the way up the road? I'm pretty sure. I'm, I'm not, I can't guarantee it, but it would be a lot. Telling them, "Sorry, we're taking back all this land."
Right, right. I think it's about uniformity, um, and trust me, I consider that. You know, they, they really should rip it up. They just took it upon themselves to build, right, and they say, "Now, is that practical?" No, it's not.
Yeah, we're, we're setting, we're setting like, kind of a bad example, but on the same hand.
Well, the kicker is that I don't think it's being discussed enough is that I, I am in support of the curb and gutter. I think it would be wonderful because you're, you're joining these two areas. Um, I'm fully in support of that. And the engineer, the draw-up plan, he's very good at doing it. I just worked with him. He drew wonderful plans for us. Um, it's not necessary to do an abandonment in order to do what you're trying to achieve. That's all I'm saying.
I'll check at the moment.
So, um, I mean, I'm listening to you. So in this situation, just because I do know what she went through with the street in the back, it was, it was a nightmare. Like, her whole situation was complete nightmare. And so I, I would be with her. I would say, "No, I'm not doing anything on this until I get this cleaned up" because, um, they ran her through pretty ragged, I think, in my opinion. So for her to make a commitment to wanna build a building and put in curb and gutter and all that stuff and develop this, I, I look at it and say, like, kudos to her for actually going the extra mile, getting it surveyed first place. I'm sorry, but lot number thirteen clearly did not get anything surveyed, um, and they have a ton of trees everywhere. And the same thing with lot P R one dash eight. They didn't get anything surveyed either. So, um, with that being said, um, she's, she's going the extra mile to kind of clean this up for us. So she's conveniently cleaning it up for us.
And I apologize if I come across as like, you know, the bad guy here, 'cause like, clearly that's what it looks like, but hey.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting that. I'm more, I'm trying to play devil's advocate in this section along with you.
Right, but with the bottom line, bottom line is, the city always owns the curb and gutter.
Then I would respectfully ask the city to pay for my curb and gutter.
Well, you know, that's kind of, that comes with the-
That's where I'm at.
That's priced in the lot that you bought, you know, um.
Which had paid thirty thousand dollars for that. It's been surveyed twice. That lot line was redistributed. That used to be one giant, two, two-acre parcel. That lot line was redistributed in the sale.
Okay, that is all priced in the price of the lot, what you paid. The fact that it does not have a curb and gutter and you have to pay to have that installed, so, um, it's always owned by the city and it should remain that way. If we open this can of worms, I think we are, we're gonna have a big backlash over this.
It just seems like our purpose here is to clean up some of these areas that were laid out with, with perks and issues, correct? So to clean that up just makes sense to me. I understand what you're saying and there may be neighbors, but is that?
Well, I think there's a misconception here. It can certainly be cleaned up without the abandonment. It's, I don't, I don't know another way to say that. I'm all for cleaning up the neighborhoods and-
And that's still gonna look like this then?
What's that?
Without an abandonment, it doesn't clean anything up. I mean, that still looks like that.
Engineer will absolutely approve, and, you know, an improvement that you're trying to make, even though it's city land. It can be done.
The city's really done me no favors. Why would I want to do that for the city is what I'm asking myself at this point.
So it's just a technicality thing. City always owns the land.
So if we deny this, then are we now responsible to go back to all these other houses and say, "Sorry, now that we know this is an issue, you need to correct it?"
No, because denying a, uh, an abandonment is not denying, nobody's stopping you from getting a curb and gutter. You can go to the engineer right now and have plans drawn up, submit it to Jennifer, and have it done. It's not, an abandonment is not a prerequisite to having that done. The only thing I'm against is the abandonment itself. It's not necessary. I think the city needs to reserve that land, just like they have done for every, every residential property in this city.
So what's the spacing? Do we know what that spacing is if, if that was to, if all of that was to be abandoned? I mean, it's obviously not been a problem because it's been in this way for a lot of years.
We've got twenty-one feet back, twenty-one feet back and nine feet back and then-
Uh, I mean, I mean, what, what is the road width as it stands right now?
The road widens at our property there. It's nar, it's very narrow coming up till you get there and then it widens to fifty feet or sixty feet.
Now it's kind of a new subdivision essentially.
It was back in the day.
Yeah, the, the roadway width changed between the two subdivisions.
And it changes at the top. At the top, the last six houses that were built are squished in. They don't have that same wide road.
So one way you might look at it too is she puts in a curb and gutter to make it even with the other properties and we do not give her, you guys do not recommend approval on the abandonment. Who takes care of that property between her real property line and that sidewalk, that curb and gutter?
That's, that's kind of how I look at it, too. I mean, the city essentially is responsible for keeping it clean.
You can't have drainage from that property onto another person's property. She would go and, she's going with the flow. She's going with the flow. City ordinance tells you, you may not drain onto another person's property.
Yeah, we're not talking about that, George. We're talking about who would take care of that piece of property if we didn't abandon it. Would we get a phone call from Carrie every six months saying you need to put weed and feed on this and?
Well, I'm sure you're, you're good at taking care of your, your stuff. It sounds like, the fact that you're here, I've, I've seen that. If you look at every house on that yard, you don't see anybody not taking care of that front property that they do not own. It is owned by the city.
In, in Salt Lake, the easements went up to the, the sidewalk, to the edge of the sidewalk. And then the, the park strip, which they called, it was, was technically owned by the city, but the residents were allowed to essentially do any landscaping that they liked, so long as it didn't create a nuisance and that sort of thing. But, but the residents of the property themselves were the ones who would take care of, um, that property.
They had the right to do that and they would-
They did. If they wanted, if they wanted to construct something in that property, they would get what was called a revocable permit. So say they wanted to put a My Little Library or something up that they had to put a little foundation in, they would get a revocable permit. So that way, if the city at any time needed to come through and make improvements, they could say, "We're plugging this out for now."
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
It looks pretty simple to me, what's.
I thought it was very simple, but apparently it's not.
No.
We're just trying to make, we're trying to make sense of bad planning, you know?
This cleans up the west side, if there's a problem on the east side, that's another issue.
There is probably a problem on the east side because they're probably nine feet.
Right.
Pat, they're probably, the street's probably nine feet on their property line. I think the whole street is off.
Obviously, there's a, there's a lot of problems in this, this city and, and we're having to kind of sort it out, you know, it's one by one. Um, clearly on Bell Avenue, there is a lot of, uh, just taking it upon themselves to, to do things without a permit and here we are, you know, talking about it, but, um, when I was out there, um, you know, and then he voiced that, he was actually going to be here at the meeting today.
I wish he would be, that was salt of the lot.
And he said, well, you know, I, I agree with him, I said, we, yeah, we don't just, unless there's an absolute necessary reason, we don't just give away land and there are necessary reasons for that. And he said, well, you know, if this goes through, um, you better be sure I want my piece and everybody else is gonna want their piece too, and he said, well, I'm glad that you understand that and I, and I won't come to the meeting, I can assure you, just based on what he was voicing, and not that, and I don't know what the situation is there, but I, I happen to agree with him on that. Uh, the city always owns the curb and gutter. And, um, if we open a can of worms for one person, we are going to have a backlash.
So if we even this up to where it matches his property line right here and they all want their piece, now we've got jogs in the street and we run, we've undone what we just.
Well, I approve the, I approve the curb and gutter, I think it would be great to do and.
I'm talking about property lines on the map, if everyone wanted to come get their piece, now we've just undone the even property line.
Yeah, and, and in theory, that would, that would be great, right? But technically, you can't just ask, you know, they, they've had it this way for what, twenty plus years? I don't know exactly.
Nineteen sixty-six.
Nineteen sixty-six, yeah.
I grew up on that street.
So that's a long time, you know, it, it, it wouldn't be practical to come back, you know, sixty years later and ask them to tear it up, even though the city could. And I think they should reserve those rights for every property, keeping it uniform, I think, is, is the important thing. Because now, um, even just one person by doing this, really, this is what would create a job in ownership. There's never been a transfer of ownership and you can see that by the yellow lines on that map, even though they built that far into city territory. Uh, curb and gutter is great, I, I am all for it. I just don't think that abandonment's necessary to do that.
If I remember right, the west side, for the most part, has curb and gutter. The east side, there is no curb and gutter.
There is no curb and gutter on the east side, all the way down from, from my, my parents' old house at ten, 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 or eleven, ten Bell Avenue, all the way down the, the east side of the road, there is no curb and gutter. Coming up, the only curb and gutter though, on the west side, begins at Jennifer Lee's house, which is one thousand whatever. Uh, so the very bottom of that street is not curb and gutter. Mrs. Lee, Carl and Jennifer Lee have curb and gutter and then it starts at, at what now is Reed Robinson's and Karen and Dan Nielsen's and goes all the way to the top. So Lee's would be the outlier, I guess. They put in curb and gutter, they were the only ones that did on the lower half of Bell Avenue. And it wasn't them that did it back in the day, it was Mrs. Isabel.
Well, yeah, I know the engineer is, they're great with their plans, um, I'm kind of trying to do the same thing. And, um, you know, they'll help you get those plans drawn, I think it would make a great improvement, being that you're the only one on that side, so.
So let me ask this, is it, should I be approaching the boards, because obviously you're not gonna make everybody else move and now you aren't necessarily thinking I should get that property, should I pay for that property? I'm not asking for it because I need it, I have an acre and a half right behind it. All I wanna do is make a nice thing, a nice curb and gutter tied on the street and then be able to do what I want, I guess, with that property to make it so it's as nice as everybody else on that street.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure.
So, do I say I need to buy that from the city? What, what would you like me to do?
Hey, I, I. I'm sure the city will take your money and you offer it, but just.
I'm sure they did, they took my four hundred twenty dollars for this, this argument today.
Why would you when you don't have your land? You know, the, the building official just stated that, yes, you can take care of that land, just like every other homeowner on that street. And, uh, you have the ability and the permission to do that, um.
But do I have permission because I got punished for the property? I did that too on Mill Street. So do I have permission to build and do what I want on that section if it's not been abandoned and tied to my property?
Look, I don't wanna be the dead horse, but I think we need to stick with the way it's always been done. Curb and gutter is always owned by the city and nothing's stopping you from going to get plans done and get a curb and gutter installed, nothing is stopping you and abandonment is not necessary, it just needs to be approved by the city.
Okay, well, you guys vote how you will.
And that's just.
As we move forward.
I'm not really vugging, because I've done my research, I know, I know.
Oh, believe me, I was fine, Leah.
Yeah, I know, this is not personal at all, I just.
Yeah, you're good.
I don't, I don't wanna open up a big backlash and I fear that might happen if we go ahead and prove this, so.
Kind of, that's your choice.
Other, other people wanting to have their, their abandonments all the way down, uh, Bell Avenue.
So why would that be so bad? If we've got the right of way, this road is existing, what's, I, I'm, I'm, I'm being rude here. Those people would have to pay us to, not pay us, but pay the city to come in here and get it redone. They'd have to get it all reevaluated. We haven't lost any roadway here. Um, I don't know, I, my only, I mean, the only backlash I could see is if we decide to, in this situation, widen this road, which maybe we want to, maybe we wanna take this, I don't know who owns further out, but maybe this needs to be a sixty-foot wide way and that's what is marked off here.
I think the plans that are proposed are great, uh, you know, that she submitted, I, I don't think we need to even mess with that. I, and I'm pretty sure, you know, uh, the engineer would embellish that and, uh, you know, come up with some official good plans, I just.
No, I just kind of feel like we're, we're doing a blind eye here. I feel like we're putting over our, our, uh, uh, blinders and saying, go for it, do whatever. We're gonna ignore the fact that everybody else has not done their job and got it surveyed, whatever. Um, and we're just going to just accept the fact that maybe thirty years down the road, the next RPC group, when we have to widen this road, is going to be dealing with all of this issue from the get-go. That's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Every property, and if you could show me one property this doesn't apply to, every property in the league, the curb and gutter is owned by the city.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the property itself. I don't care about the curb and gutter, I understand that that's, we, like Craig said, we could put that curb and gutter, we could ask, um, the city, city engineer to design that and say, Carrie would be happy to put that curb and gutter on this piece of property and just go down this road and she'll do it. I guarantee she'd do that. However, what I'm more looking at here is we're turning a blind's eye to a problem that's clearly.
Not necessarily, I mean, you have grandfathered in issues here, um, and then you also have folks who just aren't do, you know, getting permits and doing what they want. There is a distinction between the two, um. I, we don't know for sure which, uh, which homes on Bell Avenue did actually get permits, but I can tell you by looking at the map, not one single homeowner on that road owns that extra strip that it's built into, city limits. And so this would be the first one, if we prove this, it's going to, it's.